Welcome, everyone. My name is Sean Kennedy. I'd like to welcome you to the forum tonight. For those that don't know me, I am the Thompson Teachers Association President and our official spokesperson. I am basically going to get out of the way now and let a professional actually do this. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Sean. He uses that term very loosely, I think. Hi, everybody, and welcome to R.D. Parker's Leckman Theatre on this Thursday evening. We've got 20 days before an election, and hopefully tonight you'll have a better idea of who to vote for come the 22nd of October. My name's Marcus Islow. Many of you might know me in the community; others just might know to hear me on the radio. I work for CBC; that's my full-time gig, but I'm really glad to be with you tonight. Before we get started, a couple of housekeeping items. If you could kindly turn off your cellphones, that'd be awesome, just so they don't ding-a-ling at the wrong time. We're going to be starting out by introducing the candidates firstly, and then we'll give them a couple of minutes to start, to talk with opening comments, and then we're going to get around to some questions that the Teachers' Association has picked. We're actually going to pick them at random, and we'll ask, we'll pull each candidate's name at random and ask them to answer that random question. And we're going to do two rounds of that, and then we're going to open it to the floor and invite you to come up to the two microphones we have here, and we'll get you to speak directly to the candidates tonight. So, sit back, relax, have a good time. We've got roughly until about 11 o'clock. Hopefully, we can wrap up sooner, but it all depends on you and your question, so feel free to, if you need to, get up and use the washrooms, what have you. Just be quiet, if you could; that'd be much appreciated. But let's begin, and you can start by dimming the house lights, I think. Is that a good start? It's fairly bright from up here, but you can leave the stage lights on. But, as I mentioned, the election coming up, important choices for us to make with education being, I think, one of the most important things we can think about, the education of our children and their future. So with that in mind, I'd like to introduce the 11 candidates running for the school district of Mystery Lake this evening. They are, from my left to the far end, beginning alphabetically, we have Janet Brady, Sandra Fitzpatrick, Doug Cro... Doug, it's not Crochus, it's Cro... Crocus. Crocus, that's right. Ryan Land, Liz Lychuck, Dawn McDonald, Vince Nolan, Guido Oliveira, Clint Salto, Leslie Tucker, and Carolyn Winship. So, a big round of applause for all the candidates tonight. And, as I mentioned, we're going to open with a first round of comments. We'll give each candidate three minutes, and I've got my handy-dandy stopwatch app to keep them on time. And we're going to start with, first off, Janet Brady. So go ahead, Janet, I'll pass the microphone. Or actually, we have one microphone, and that's the trouble tonight. We'll have to pass that microphone down to all the candidates so they can use it in turn, so...
Stand up here.
You can, if you like. Go ahead, yeah. Sure. Your preference.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, fellow candidates, ladies and gentlemen, if I were to ask Chris Hadfield, Canada's most famous astronaut, where his interest in science and space began, I think he would tell me it began in elementary school, and that he participated in science fairs when he was a student. If I were to ask Donovan Bailey, one of Canada's greatest Olympic athletes and gold medal sprinter, how he developed his athletic talents, I bet he would tell me he was a member of his high school track team, track and field team. If I were to ask some members of the Winnipeg Symphony Orchestra how their musical careers began, I'm quite certain that most of them would state that they were members of their junior high or senior high school bands. Let me share with you some of the activities that I participated in during my public school days growing up in Montreal. I was on the girls' basketball team in high school. I won a trophy in grade four for competing in a regional spelling bee. I was on student council during the last two years of high school. But the experience from my high school days that had the greatest impact on my life was volunteer work. A couple of classmates from grade 10 and myself began volunteering at a local community centre in an after-school program. The program consisted of helping children with their homework, supervising activities such as floor hockey, and taking the children out on field trips in the Montreal area. This experience influenced my decision to become a social worker, and I've been volunteering one way or other ever since. What is the role of the public school system in our fast-paced information society? It is to help students develop their literacy and numeracy skills that they will require to function in the world. It is the job of the public school system to assist students to gain the social skills and work habits that will allow them to earn a living in the future in a career of their choice. I believe the public school system has a role to play in assisting students to become good citizens of their country, province, and community. In the early 1960s, John F. Kennedy, who was president of the United States at the time, said, "All of us do not have equal talent, but all of us should have an equal opportunity to develop our talents." Maybe there is another Chris Hadfield or Donovan Bailey in our school district. Maybe one of our students one day will find a cure for cancer or the common cold. If we, at the school district of Mystery Lake, provide our students the tools that they need in order to develop their talents, we'll be doing our job. Then the students can go in life and do their job, whether it's being an athlete, musician, astronaut, engineer, teacher, plumber, or heavy-duty mechanic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Janet. Okay, this other microphone is working as well. Make sure, check, good, there we go. Awesome. Good. Thank you, Janet. And again, three minutes we're allotting to each of the candidates, so let's get to our next candidate, Sandra. Sandra Fitzpatrick.
I'm Sandra Fitzpatrick. Thank you for coming out tonight. Most of you are here tonight because you care about your community, you care about the city, and you care about education. Those are the same reasons that I am here. My main focus today is your children. Children are our future, and I want to support and contribute to the future leaders of our city. I am hoping to bring a fresh perspective and new ideas to the challenges the school district faces and be a part of moving forward. It's not about what we are doing wrong, it's about what we can do better. Young adults like me make up a large portion of our population. We need to remind these young adults that they too have a stake in public education and that their voice matters. It should be in everyone's best interest to ensure the future, to ensure a future for students that includes quality education and a safe place to learn. I chose a career in community development because I understand that housing and education are the key to a successful community. In my job, I am fortunate to manage a great project that allows students to earn their Level One apprenticeship in carpentry while building houses. Seeing the pride on these students' faces and having them ask me when they can start their next project was an inspiration. We started to dream in their minds and allowed them to achieve that dream. It was on that day that I realized how much pride and joy I felt working with these students, and I thought to myself, "Why am I not involved in education in my own community?" I came across this quote by John Quincy Adams, and I feel it is suited here. "If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader. Give a student the right opportunity, and we will be amazed at what they can achieve." I am running for school trustee because I care about helping others, I care about my community, and I want to inspire others to reach their potential. I was born and raised here in Thompson, and it was only eight years ago that I graduated from R.D. Parker and was in this theatre as a student. It was at this school that I gained the knowledge and competencies to become a contributing member of my community. No one on this panel is a perfect trustee, and nobody can be. We must remember we are electing a board, and our community deserves a great team. I will be a strong member of that team and will bring a unique perspective to the table. If you elect me, I will serve the needs of the community, I will work hard to make sure you know what is going on, when it is happening, and how it affects you. I hope you will give me the opportunity to give back to my community and vote Sandra Fitzpatrick for school trustee. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Doug, Doug Crocus?
Yeah.
You can come up here, yeah, if you care to.
Since we're setting a trend, I may as well come up here, too. First of all, I want to say it's really encouraging to see such a fantastic list of trustees or prospective trustees running for the school board this year. I think it's really encouraging, and I hope very much to be a part of that. My name is Doug Crocus. I'm originally from Thompson, and I'm also running for trustee with the school district of Mystery Lake because I want to be an advocate and a supporter of the trained professionals, both in the school system and in the administration. I want to help promote and support the good work that's being done within the school district of Mystery Lake, and I believe will continue to be done. I think that, or I agree with what I read tonight, that the public school system is a cornerstone of a free, healthy, democratic society. I think that's so true. A matter of fact, it's incredibly important for all of our futures, I think, that we have a healthy and strong public school system. And I don't have quite as long and elaborate a speech as some other people have prepared, and for that I apologize. I'll try to be concise. The public school system is a responsibility to all of us, and I think it's very important that we all work together to try to provide equal opportunities for all our students. And that goes from special needs to vocational trades and advanced learning, because everybody deserves, as Janet so aptly put, an opportunity to, whether those talents all be the same or not, an opportunity to improve and pursue them. As I said a few minutes ago, I am originally from Thompson, and I went to this school system, and other than the incredible influence that my family had on me and my friends, I think that most of what I have today I have to thank a teacher for. I have a bit of a cold, so I'm having a hard time getting this all out, but... We, I mean, Mrs. Smith, Harold Smith's mum, Mr. Ardern, Bernie Freeman, Wayne Johnson's mum, Mrs. Johnson, all those people did amazing things for me. And one of the things I learned back then is, it's not just about learning stuff, it's about learning how to be a citizen. And that's why I want to be part of the School District of Mystery Lake Board of Trustees, because I think it's very, very important for the future of our community, and I want to be a part of the community. So, vote Doug Crocus on October 22nd. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. And Ryan, if you want it, you can come up or take this or... Okay, it's, well, we've got the trend going on, so just maybe you'll have to move the podium down, I think.
You made it look so easy. So, good evening. John Wooden said that there are two keys to building success: hard work and enthusiasm. If you elect me as your trustee, I will work exceptionally hard with joyful enthusiasm. There is a fire in my belly, and it was not lit by a desire for revenge or by anger. Shame on me, if it were. Some say that holding on to anger is like eating poison and expecting the other person to get sick. Let me assure you that I am eating no poison. This fire in my belly was lit and burns because I carry an unbridled passion for learning, for learners, and for leadership. It is in everything I do and everything I am. Michael Fulan said that learning is the work, and I tend to agree with that. So you won't likely hear me take much of a position on anything tonight, especially if I feel I haven't yet learned enough to make an ethical, informed decision on your behalf. And what qualifies me? It's less about my degrees and my experiences as an educator, and more about my values and behaviours, about my committee and board service, my community work, and about my commitment to learning. I understand that my main role is to be ethical, responsible, and trustworthy in ensuring accountability. Perhaps above all, you need to know that I will work hard, and I will do so with enthusiasm. And what do I care about? I am not content with the number of students that are not successful in our community, that do not graduate, who do not know about the importance of attendance, or who do not feel cared for and moderately challenged every day. I care about educators and families, that we look after them as well, and I care about recognizing excellence. I also care about collaboration and real partnerships in order to achieve even better outcomes for all of our students. Ubuntu, loosely defined, it's the African ideal that means "I am because of you." It's about community in the deepest sense of the word. Students are successful because of us, but we must be honest about the data, and we must continually measure ourselves and our progress towards our desired outcomes. I want everybody in this community to be a champion for the success of children and youth, so that they can achieve a rate, a rate of achievement the same or better than the provincial average. We have to believe in it. My commitment to you is that I will work exceptionally hard for you, and I will do so with hopeful enthusiasm while being a champion for achievement, engagement, and inclusion. Parker Palmer said, "The loudest lesson we teach is who we are." My name is Ryan Land, and I am a parent, partner, coach, teacher, and perhaps above all tonight, I am a community leader who cares about learning. There is a fire in my belly. I am a commu... and I humbly ask you to consider me for school trustee on October 22nd. Thank you. Equusani, mercy, and Ubuntu.
Thanks, Ryan. Liz, there's still an opportunity for you to take the mic, or would you like to come up? Okay, come on up.
So, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I'd like to thank the Thompson Teachers' Association for asking myself and my co-candidates here tonight for this evening's debate. For those of you that don't know me, I am a long-term Thompson resident, and I have spent my career working in the social services sector. Throughout my career, I've been focused on providing service to children, families, and the community. I'm a strong advocate for the provision of services to children and families. I've had opportunity in my time in Thompson to serve on multiple committees, boards, and also I was on parent council for a number of years. I've been a consistent volunteer in the schools. I've been present as a parent, as a worker, and a volunteer. Throughout my career, I've been called on the schools, by the schools, to consult when there's difficult issues arising with specific children. I've had opportunity to provide training and to provide education pertaining to mental health and wellbeing. I've been an advocate for additional services for our children and our families and our community. I'd like to continue my work and work on the school board, and I'd like to help in the work that's already been done by our members of the school board in developing policies. I'd like to increase our literacy rates and our graduation rates. I'd like to continue to provide unique opportunities for our students, such that is offered through the apprenticeship program and our athletic programs. I know that we need to use our resources wisely, as that our funding is scarce and it's not likely to increase. We have been concerned about the provision of supports to our special needs children, and a lot of that, those supports have been cut. I think it's important that we look at services and programs for our new students to Canada, and sometimes, as English is not their first language. Of particular interest to me is improving the mental health literacy and improving the mental wellbeing of students and staff of the school district of Mystery Lake. I have the skills, knowledge, experience, and the characteristics that will hopefully make me an effective trustee. I'm a committed team player, and I believe in research, best practices, collaboration, and hard work. I'm committed, and I'm an assertive problem solver. I believe that no one person has the answers, and that it's our obligation as potential trustees to ensure that we represent public opinion. My own children have gone through the school systems and are graduates of R.D. Parker Collegiate. They have went on to obtain post-secondary educational, education, and I'm very thankful to the teachers and administration for the role that they have played in helping my children grow, which has not come without some bumps in the road. I have a genuine interest in serving on the school board because I am invested in the success of all children in our school system and in our community. I have the interest, the skill, and the characteristics to be a valuable member of the school board of Mystery Lake, so I really hope that on October 22nd that you'll vote for me, Liz Lychuck. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And now Dawn, you can come on up, if you like. Dawn McDonald. Can you all hear the candidates, by the way? Okay, good.
Thanks for... Sorry. Thanks very much for the opportunity to come out and talk this evening. My name is Dawn McDonald. We moved to Thompson back in 1988 with the idea we'd come here for five years and check it out, see what it was like, and apparently we forgot to move away. We've had three children who were born and raised in Thompson and went through the school district of Mystery Lake system, and all of them graduated, and all of them have gone on to post-secondary somewhere. They all had wonderful experiences here, again, not without hiccups, but almost always resolved quite successfully. This school system worked out extremely well for my kids. It wasn't just the academic part of it, it was also all the other experiences this school system offers. The athletics, the opportunity to travel, the band program, all of that helped make them who they are today. And one of the reasons I'm interested in running is I want to see those opportunities, and I want to see that success for everyone else's kids. My kids have moved on, I've got the time to do this now, and it's something I've always felt strongly about, that any community needs a strong education system. The people that live here have to believe that it's strong, they have to believe in it, and anyone thinking of coming here, it's one of the things they check out. It's really important that a school system have the confidence of its community. We have to promote where we're successful, and we have to work to address anything that's perceived as not successful. I happen to believe that this system is great, and I really want it to continue to work for everybody else. I have previous experience with boards, I've been on the board of Thompson Unlimited since it was founded. It is now time to move on to the next challenge, and I'm hoping this is it. I like board work, I like committee work, value the opinions of others, the opportunity to actually hear other views on something and come to a common understanding. I think one of the most important attributes that a board member can bring is the ability to play well with others. You've got to be open to what everyone else thinks, you've got to be open to what the community's thinking, and in the end, you've got to be open to change your mind in the odd event you weren't right. I really believe in this system. All of my kids have done very well, and they were exposed to some really amazing teachers and some really amazing coaches, and they had the chance to do things that, I don't know that most people in Thompson realize, just how many opportunities our kids have here. Not all school systems are like this. You can't do all the things that you can do here and other places. My kids have been to Europe, my kids have been skiing in the mountains, they had the chance to play on teams. Not everybody can do everything, money will always be an issue, but here you've got the opportunity, you've got the chance to get out and do something. And they're out there in a world that they've come to realize is a lot smaller and a lot more accessible than many people realize. And that's it. I'm hoping you...
Thank you, Dawn. Sorry, we're holding everybody to three minutes. Vince, Vince Nolan, come on up. If you want, or I can just pass the mic down? Okay, it's...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Those who don't know me, Vince Nolan, married to Gwen with three boys and a granddaughter. Been at T3, sorry, I've been at Valley for 25 years now, and currently a supervisor at T3 Mine. The last seven years, I spent in HR as a training instructor, more recently as a continuous improvement facilitator and business systems coordinator. That, sorry, I got back up there last... In the divisional sport group. I made the move to T3 last year, but the continuous improvement training I received while I was there really helped me hone my leadership skills, made me realize that we can use these same tools in the division here, in the district. So basically, there's techniques there that eliminate waste, which equates to money, money equals time, right? So, in the district, we're on the right path right now, but we could still do some more. So, I believe I can bring fresh ideas to the table, keep our expenditures down with the district, without creating any undue hardships to our teachers for more work, right, the teachers and staff. My goal would allow us to invest more in our students' future and lessen wasted tax dollars. Currently, I sit in a few committees there, I chair the PR committee. Past four years, I've been a member of Finance, Property and Personnel, as well as the Thompson Aboriginal Education Advisory Committee, and the whole group of us are sitting with the city and TTE liaisons. Past committees include the Thompson Newcomers Settlement Committee and Active Safe Roots at School. During these past four years, I've also met and compiled a network of human resources within the education system that includes the Minister of Education, Manitoult School Board Association Director, Mass Executive Director, and many other trustees and dignitaries from across Canada, just to name a few. So, my last campaign, I stated that the students deserve the best education we can provide for them, and that our teachers are the backbone of the education system. We need the best resources available, pardon me, available to them. And that because I have children, and now a granddaughter in the school division, I want to, I want what parents expect, and that's simply the best education that we can provide for our children, together with all the stake, and with, together with all the stakeholders in community. I still believe this to be true, as it takes a village to raise a child, and now with the first term behind me, I have the experience, the confidence, and the confidence to say that I can not only continue to maintain these goals, but I can even surpass them. I take great pride in knowing that we've managed a healthy budget, to stay cost-effective in managing our schools, buildings, program upgrades, and salaries, all in the same time. Okay, so, I guess I'm done. On October 22nd, you know what to do. Thanks.
Thanks, Vince. Before we introduce Guido, I just want to mention that Guido has to work later tonight, and so if you see him slipping out the side door, it's not because he doesn't want to answer your questions, it's because he's got to go to work. So, Guido Oliveira, come on up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Guido Oliveira, and I'm proud to have served as a trustee for the school district of Mystery Lake for the last eight years. I'm here tonight seeking to be re-elected for a third term and represent the people of Thompson. Born and raised in Thompson, proud to call Thompson home. I attended both Juniper Elementary School and R.D. Parker Collegiate. I'm married to Tracy Hansen, who is a counselor here at the high school. I have two daughters who are currently being brought up through the division. I am very proud of my children's accomplishments, and this speaks volumes to the teachers and staff that have provided... staff that have provided them with the tools that led to their successes. I as well have been employed with Valley for 25 and a half years, during which time I've worked in various departments. I was also involved with the United Steelworkers, Local 6166, as a safety and health co-chair, as well as a grievance steward. When I first added my name to the ballot eight years ago, I thought I could change the world. In the last eight years, I realized how things truly work. One of the time, I have seen a lot of positive changes within our district. We have brought stability, improved upon tracking our students' progress to ensure their success. For the past seven years, I've been part of the finance committee, I'm very proud of the work that has been accomplished. We have seen some tremendous cost savings within the district, which has allowed us to continually increase the spending that goes directly into our schools. All of this to ensure that our teacher, staff, and students are comfortable and safe. Just want to note that all these savings were accomplished without having to raise taxes from our community. Our last increase of 1.9% was the first one in seven years. As a trustee, I was also part of the steelworkers negotiating committee, I was part of negotiating the last two contracts, and I'm proud with our current five-year agreement. I was used to sit on the technical vocational committee before as this band. I believe these programs are very important options that open many doors for our youth. I was disappointed when we lost our accreditation in some of these programs, but I'm very pleased to say that with hard work, our power mechanics program is once again recognized and accredited. We now need to ensure the same happens with our carpentry and food services program. We need to offer quality programs that will benefit our students after they complete high school. In closing, I'd like to say that I am proud to be a trustee for our district, I enjoy talking with community members, teachers, staff, and students, and hearing their thoughts and opinions and concerns. I value the school district, I value teachers, staff, and I value our children. Going to go out on a limb, once re-elected, I will strive to see ongoing continual improvements as we have seen over the last eight years. Thank you. On October 22nd, vote for Guido Olivera.
Thank you, Guido, and we'll turn the microphone over to Clint Salto. Clint, come on up.
Well, I'm definitely not in my comfort zone, so can we start now? I'm running for the Mr. Lake School Division's Board of Trustees. I'm doing this because I love my community. My community has helped me raise my children. When I moved to Thompson 13 years ago, I was a single parent struggling with four young children. Because my children are my world, they're the best thing that's happened in my life, they represent everything good and beautiful and pure and perfect in my life. I love them more than anything else. And this is why I'm grateful to this day for Wapunook Community School. The staff at Wapunook welcomed me into the school and basically told me that I could be a part of my children's education. So I got involved in many programs as possible at Wapunook. I got involved in the FAST program, which is Families and Schools Together program, and this eight-week program used techniques and games which helped me bond with my children. Then during the parents' time, I got to bond with other parents at Wapunook during our parent talking circles, so we were no longer strangers in the hall. I got the opportunity to hear from other parents that they love, the love that they have for their children, and I got the privilege to hear about their own personal struggles and challenges in their lives. I also became involved in other programs such as the Cree Mastery Program, the outdoor education programs, the annual traditional spring ceremonies, lighthouses, breakfast programs, integrated service meetings, and after-school programs, just to name a few. I got involved with the parent council for about eight years, in which I was the president for many of these years. Then I became a subteacher at Wapunook School. I am currently on a premier's advisory council on education. I am one of three people who sit on this council, like, one of three people from Thompson. The premier's office recognizes that Aboriginal students have a high dropout rate in this province, and we are exploring ways to address this issue. I am on a community schools committee in this, and my wish is to have more community-based schools in this great province. I am asking for your support in joining the Mr. Lake Schools Board of Trustees. I am also entrenched in the marginalized community of Thompson. I have built friendships with people on the streets, people who are homeless, I have built relationships with people struggling with addictions, and I have built relationships with many youth who are at risk. So generally, these aren't the people that get out and vote, so I'm basically asking the larger community to help me to bridge this gap, and that's my intention, is to be an advocate for, you know, people that need that voice. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, and straight on time, perfect, with three seconds to spare. He's got his own timer, just like me. Okay, well, we'll turn the mic over now to Leslie Tucker. Leslie, if... I think we lost Clint there, didn't we? Yeah, okay.
I'm Leslie Tucker. Thank you to the TTA for hosting the forum, Mark for moderating, and for Paul from Shaw Cable for sliding in from holidays and time to man the camera. Right off the top, I'd like to speak to the challenges of the past four years. There were many. The governance of a public school system is complex, and that, of course, goes hand-in-hand with challenges. I'd like to note that although there were highly publicized issues that we all know about, the board dealt with dozens and dozens of other issues that draw far less attention but are equally important. Through all the issues and challenges, both public and non-public, I based my decisions, my recommendations, and my board vote on what I believed was best for the district as a whole. I always voted ethically and independently. So there were many issues, but there was a lot of progress and improvement as well. We developed a solid partnership with Apprenticeship Manitoba for the delivery of the High School Apprenticeship Program. We created an excellent website. We had addressed geographical barriers by increasing funding for travel, implemented a cutting-edge shared leadership model at the superintendent level, we developed, implemented, and monitored a comprehensive board policy manual. We worked towards consistent human resource practices at the senior admin level. And I know that most of this doesn't sound exciting or glamorous, and it's not, but it is what this job is. It's the meat and potatoes of what a board under our governance model does, what we are to do, and we did some of it very well. And when I say "we," I include wholeheartedly the senior administration and all the district employees. A board does nothing without a solid team to work with. I'm seeking reelection to continue with these positive developments and to support students and staff through district events, the award ceremonies, annual concerts, cultural events, athletic activities, graduations, and so on, the fun stuff that's involved in this kind of job. I want to see our programming continue to evolve with the changing needs of district students and community. I want to ensure governance that fosters respectful relationships. I want to see successful educational outcomes for all students. And I'd just like to acknowledge Cy Gregowski's work on the board. We didn't know each other before the last election, but through the past four years, we became good friends and I'll miss her support. But I think there's a good, solid pool of trustee candidates up on this stage. I'm so pleased with the Aboriginal representation, and I'm especially delighted to have a young Aboriginal female candidate. So, I hope to be among the seven who make up your new board of trustees, and I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Leslie. And now, last but not least, the alphabet sometimes hurts you, I guess. We've got Caroline Winship, so come on down, Caroline. By the way, we're going to dispense with the alphabetical order and the Dewey Decimal System and all that other stuff in the next round, I promise, okay?
Still on? Yep. Good evening. And I want to first thank my moderator, our moderator, Mark Sizlo. I want to thank the Thompson Teachers Association for hosting us all tonight, and thank you so much to all of you for coming out to hear from all of us. I am Caroline Winship. I am a mother to four of my own and a stepmother to one. I'm a graduate of R.D. Parker Collegiate, and I'm honored to be on the ballot for school board trustee for the school district of Mystery Lake. I am a product of public education in Thompson. Born and raised in the north, I'm raising my family here because we believe in Thompson and its future. By being actively involved in public education, we help to keep our communities healthy. Whether we have children in the system or not, we all have invested interest. As I learned that some of my children have learning disabilities, as a mother, I had to be well-informed on what my children needed for one-on-one instruction. I made the very difficult choice to educate them at home in those early days. As their instructor, I have remained positive that they will be assets to society and public school as their development progresses. As an advocate for autism and other exceptional learners, I am known to be positive and well-informed. I've been invited to this district's professional development days to help train our educational assistants and teachers. Our community can be best served by putting the successes of all students and the support of our teachers as a top priority. Since 2010, I've been asked by community and board members to be a part of this process, and I've had a dream of being a part of the future of our education system. It is still my proven passion, experience, tenacity, transparency, and professionalism that I want to bring to the table and act just as fervently for all the important issues and all the students. The elected school board should not only be accountable and effective as they govern this great district, but they should cultivate an atmosphere of respect and trust with each other and all the people their decisions affect. I am Caroline Winship, polite, positive, and well-informed. Let me be a part of your future. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline, and give it up for all 11 candidates in the 2014 school board elections. Thanks. Now, I'll hand them one at a time, and I've got questions that the teachers association has come up with, and I'm going to be putting those questions to the candidates. So, let's get on with it. First, I'll just give the microphone over, and we've got two microphones here, so... So, I have never done this before, it's kind of like it was organized by an accounting firm, right? All right. So I'm pulling Guido Olivera. Guido, you've got a question, our first question, and I'm just going to, again, pull it out at random. So pass the mic down, now that's the only mic, so pass it down to Guido. And Guido, your question is, should the board make a strong effort to publicize its decisions? That's the question. Should the board make a strong effort to publicize its decisions?
I think... Hello? I think we have, in the past, we've publicized our decisions. Our meetings are televised, our minutes, once the minutes are approved at the following meeting, they are posted on our website, so... Other than that, I don't know what to tell you. Like, I believe that we do publicize them.
Okay, thank you. Our next, I'm going to pull Clint's name, Clint Salto. And Clint, I've got another question for you. I'm pulling this out at random, try not to look. All right, the question for you, Clint, is, what sort of relationship do you think a trustee should have with the other members of the board and the superintendent? So again, what sort of relationship do you think a trustee should have with the other members of the board and the superintendent?
Other members of the board?
Yes, as a trustee.
As a trustee, what kind of relationship should they have with other members of the board and the superintendent?
Yeah, you paraphrased that quite well. Go ahead, yeah.
Well, we're all working on the same issues. I imagine that it'll be a challenge, you know, everyone brings different opinions and agendas. I guess we should work good together.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, our next question is for Doug Crocus. So Doug, we've got a question for you, and I'm just going to reach in again at random. So pass the mic down to Doug. So it says here, "Many elementary teachers in the school district are required to teach their classroom students in French, but they're not required to have a French background, and many do not. Do you think this is appropriate? Why or why not?"
Well, whether it's appropriate or not, it's probably realistic because it's not a French school system, so if we have to introduce French into the school, I suppose that if that's the best we can do, right? But I think that it would be ideal to have a French-speaking person teaching French in all cases. I think that would be the ideal case, yes.
Okay, well, thank you. Next, we have Caroline Winship. So, microphone goes on down to the end for Caroline. And Caroline's question is, what improvements would you make to school facilities? So again, what improvements would you make to school facilities?
Are we talking infrastructure?
My interpretation is just facilities, so go ahead.
Okay. Well, overall, I think our school district does a great job in so many different areas, including infrastructure, facilities, if that's to include schools and miscellaneous buildings and that. I feel wholeheartedly that there has been great improvement. I think there was over 120 windows replaced recently, and the school board office itself has been brought up to par in several areas. I do think there's still quite a bit to be desired in terms of the infrastructure, facilities within our schools, in terms of the classrooms, and the areas that our teachers are actually teaching our children.
All right, thanks, Carol. Our next question is for Sandra Fitzpatrick. So, microphone comes on down this way. And Sandra, your question is, what do you think school board trustees, or rather, do you think school board trustees are politicians? Why or why not? So again, do you think school board trustees are politicians? Why or why not?
Well, I think through the campaign process, it sure feels like we're politicians. That being said, I don't think we actually are politicians. But I do think that we all do take our jobs seriously, and we all will take it seriously, just like politicians do. But, you know, maybe we're a little bit more truthful.
Next, we have Dawn McDonald. And Dawn, here's your question. And it is a two-part question. It goes as follows. What are the schools in the community getting right these days, and what do you think is the biggest challenge our schools currently face? So again, what are schools doing right, and, or, sorry, yes, what are they getting right, and what's the biggest challenge?
Well, by all appearances, they're getting lots right. One of the things that I'm most interested in is what measures are having placed to determine which children need help early, and I think there's a lot of effort going into that. I'll admit that I don't understand it well, because, let's face it, when your kids are in high school, you tend to focus on that. But the reality is, the foundation for high school was set at the beginnings of elementary school. I know there's programming in place that identifies kids that need help and that puts resources in place to help them. I think that's absolutely critical because by the time you hit the high school, if you don't have that foundation, it's just too late for you. So I think that's something they're doing great, or, I think that's something they're doing right, and that's something that we need to continue to support. And now you're going to read phase two to me.
All right, and so the second part of the question was, what do you think they're getting right, and what do you think their biggest challenge is now in the community?
I think one of the main challenges is, the community is becoming increasingly diverse, and what that really means is that you've got constantly changing needs. and what that really means is that you've got constantly changing needs, and you've got to be able to respond to that and address it. I think it's a challenge. I think it's probably one of the most important ones we face.
Okay. Thanks, Dawn. And next, we have, as I draw into the envelope again, Liz Lychuk. So, Liz, and your question, Liz. "What is your opinion on zero tolerance for school violence?" So, again, what's your opinion of zero violence, rather, of zero tolerance on school violence?
I think in terms of zero tolerance, I think schools need to be a safe place, but I also think we need to work with all students. So, I think we need to understand where the violence is coming from and provide the help and support to that student, and also recognize, you know, what steps need to be put in place to help to create safety for that student, as well as the students around and the school personnel.
Okay. Thank you, Liz. Feel free to erupt in spontaneous applause if you care to. That's all right. And next, we've got Vince Nolan. Vince, this question's for you. And I'll just shake them around a bit. Okay. Your question is, Vince, it says, "Please describe the differences between the roles of the school board versus roles of the superintendent." So, I guess they're asking you to define those differences between the roles of the school board versus the roles of the school board superintendent.
Well, I guess in layman's terms, the board creates policy. Superintendents make sure it happens, I guess, do the work. Superintendents are like the CEO of your company if you were running a business, right? They are the, and they get everything going, and the board acts as the, I guess, we have seven people. No one person has a board. One individual has the power to make anybody do anything. It's all united, and yeah, it's, a board is a mind of seven, I guess, individuals, and the superintendent is the actual, Jesus, I didn't think it was going to be this tough to answer this. The superintendent is the boss, I guess, at the end of the day.
Okay. Thanks, Vince. All right. Next, as we go through our list, I have Leslie Tucker. So, Leslie, you're next. And Leslie, I'll put you in the hot seat, get you a tough one.
Oh, great. Are you okay?
So, Leslie, your question is, yeah, I just pulled it from the tough pile. "Should there be a limit on the number of students with special needs and/or behavioral students per classroom?" So, again, should there be a limit on the number of students with special needs and/or behavioral students per classroom? So, we're talking about those two.
Well, that's an interesting question. There would have to either be a limit to the number of students with special needs or increased EAs, but just in respect to chaos and everything else that can go wrong, I would think that there should be some type of limit or some accommodation to make sure that, to ensure that everybody has a good learning experience, right? So, it's not a yes or a no. It's kind of a, like, you know, who's the teacher? How many EAs are there? What are the supports in place? What are the special needs? That sort of thing. And I guess I'm kind of a politician. Didn't give a straight answer.
Okay. Well, thanks, Leslie. And, well, the next one's for Janet Brady. So, microphone comes on down. Okay. And here's Janet's question. "So, in the past, there have been ideas discussed where Arti Parker Collegiate and the School District of Mystery Lake property would be shared with the University College of the North. Do you think it's appropriate to have university students in schools with minors? If so, why or why not?" So, again, they're talking about sharing that property, and do you think it's appropriate to have university students at schools with minors?
Okay. Well, currently, the situation is that they're neighbors, next-door neighbors to one another. So, I don't spend that much time over in that parking lot. I've heard more horror stories about the parking lot than anything else. They are neighbors, so they should be able to share that campus. I guess they're calling it a campus. The age, you know, certainly there's an age difference between students who are in grade nine and university students who might be in their mid-20s. I'm not, I wouldn't have thought that it's an issue. I'm glad that somebody thought it was an issue and that they're putting a question out there tonight about it. But I guess I haven't thought that far ahead about that. I'm certainly glad that UCN is here. They're located next door to the high school, so I'm hoping through osmosis that students will just look over across that parking lot and going, hmm, maybe I'm going to finish grade 12 and cross the parking lot and go over there and take some other courses that I hadn't anticipated. So, I haven't really thought about that because it sounds to me like it might be raising an issue that really hasn't materialized yet.
Okay. Thanks, Janet. And by my reckoning, we have one more candidate left. That's Ryan, so Ryan Land. Here's your question.
It's like speed dating.
And it is, "Should all schools have full-day kindergarten? Why or why not?" So, again, should all schools have full-day kindergarten? That would be, of course, elementary school as opposed to high school, right?
With the exception of Arti Parker, is that what you're saying, Mark? Yeah, it's an interesting question, and I know it's something for debate and something that we do have some discretion over, what we choose to do. And again, I suppose I'm going to play a little bit of the politician because my background is not kindergarten, and that certainly isn't where my expertise are. I do know that some of the biggest differences we can make in children's lives are actually in those earliest years. So, the best work that we do around graduation rates and achievement will happen then, so we can keep them on track longer, the sooner we get them on that track and keep them on that track. So, working with children and youth in the school system at an early age, as opposed to dealing with 19-year-olds that have one credit, is a much more sustainable way to deal with education. So, I like the idea that we get kids involved in the system, and, you know, maybe there's ways to be more targeted and specific where we have full day for students who need it most. Maybe there's an efficiency in there to be realized. I'm not sure, but that's where I'd be at.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. All right. That ends our first round of Snappers for Reach for the Top. Just kidding. But we're going to go another round with more questions, and, like I say, we're trying to distribute them evenly. Oh. Ah, we are out of questions. So, all right. Well, then, we're going to ask...
What if we're...
Ah, we're going to go to the mics. Excellent. That's what I was hoping we could do. All right. I read the program wrong. All right. These things don't happen in radio, so. All right. So, we've got two sets of microphones. Actually, I've got the other set, the other microphone here, and so, really only have one microphone because we're going to have to share them. So, we've got one microphone over on that end, and so, if you could kindly line up, what I'll do is I'll recognize you. If you could kindly phrase your question as a question, but I'll give you a minute for a preamble if you need it. And you can ask individual candidates and direct them that way.
Sure.
Go ahead. Identify yourself, please. Go ahead.
My name is Sandra Rossich. First of all, thank you very much for running. It takes a lot of courage to do that, and I applaud you because one of my things about being in this community is to be involved in the community. I couldn't do what you're doing. I couldn't take it. So, but you're working for me and my kids. So, there's a couple of people that I'm going to say key words, engagement, public opinion, community thinking. Challenges that you had were minute, and you didn't have as much public outcry as maybe one or two in the last four years, and important issues that probably didn't get out to the community. So, my question is, one of the goals of the board that is set out on their website is to improve communication, engagement with all educational partners and the community, and strengthen the public profile of the School District of Mystery Lake, the development of a comprehensive PR plan. I want you, as trustees, to engage me. So, what are you going to do?
Okay. Thanks, Sandra. So, what are you going to do to engage trustees? We'll throw that open if, just put up your hand. Nobody raised the microphone. Go ahead, Ryan, if you'd like to. Go ahead. What would you do?
So, you know, I think as an administrator, one of the things we did in terms of engaging, and I know it's a common practice, I saw it was over at Riverside today, and John Wamboldt was talking about doing the same thing, but the idea of a walkabout, and I think that's kind of important for us as trustees as well. We can get locked into the paperwork, I think, and forget about the people work as trustees. And that's about getting out into the community, and I'm a big believer in the places you hear the least from are probably the places where the most learning lives for you as a trustee. So, we tend to lean on our comfort zones and surround ourselves with like-minded people. But it's probably the people who have a different opinion who have the most to teach us, and I've certainly learned that in the north a lot, and that notion of doing more, you know, two ears and one mouth, so you should be doing more listening than talking. And with that, I will pass the mic along.
Thanks. Anybody else? Janet Brady, go ahead. So, how would you engage the public, Janet?
Okay. I've got my little prop here. This is the district newsletter. It's been probably a year and a half, so we've produced probably three or four already. They are district-wide. They come out twice a year. I think our next one is probably due before Christmas. So, this is one of the PR things that we have accomplished in the past couple of years. We do rotate our meetings, so our meetings are not always in the school board office. So, usually, we do get out to each and every school once a year for a meeting, so the principals will host us for the meeting that we let them know ahead of time. So, those are some of the things that we're doing out there. Sandra, it's certainly not, it's a step. It's, we have more things that we need to be doing, but I totally agree with you that we need to be more engaged, but we have some things are on the go already. So, thank you for your question.
Okay. Thank you, Janet. And anyone else? Liz? Well, first, we'll go with Sandra, then Liz. Go ahead.
Thank you for your question. I'm glad you asked this question, actually, because when I told people I was running, one of the biggest things that I heard was that a lot of people don't hear much about the school board. I plan to engage the community by spreading the word when we have meetings, you know, just hoping to let the community know and people that I know, and hoping that I can spread by word that we're having meetings when we have them scheduled, and showing people where they can access the minutes from our meetings. A lot of people said that they, you know, they don't hear about meetings, but the minutes are posted online, but I'm assuming that that's a loss of, or a gap in communication, and people don't know how to access those minutes. So, I think it's just a matter of making the community aware of where they can access that information so that they can familiarize themselves with what goes on at the school board meetings. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Sandra. And Liz, your turn.
I just wanted to say that I think it's about being accessible, too. I think that, you know, we have to, as we put ourselves forward, it's not just about being present at the meetings, but it's knowing that we're representing you as our public and that we're bringing your opinions forward. So, I think that as much as we have a responsibility to bring, you know, your opinions forward, I think it's really important for all of you to bring your ideas present to us so we can bring the information forward at meetings. I think also as community volunteers, it's important that we access the people that maybe not necessarily have a strong voice or that will speak up. I know often in, throughout my career and in my contacts with people, sometimes if you sit back and watch some of the people that necessarily aren't necessarily saying a lot, you can tell that they're thinking a lot. So, sometimes just by approaching them and asking them what their thoughts are and their opinions, you can learn a lot. Often, it's the people that stay back and that are quiet, often have a lot to offer. I just wanted to say, as a trustee, I would want to be accessible, and I would want people to come forward and let me know if there's something that they would like me to bring forward to a meeting or an opinion that they would like me to represent.
Okay. Thanks, Liz. And Dawn, Dawn next, and then we'll turn it over to Leslie.
I have to say that when I go through the minutes and look at them, they're essentially a skeleton. They're not really interesting. There's really no sign of how decisions were reached, just that they were. And I have the sense that presumably the interesting stuff is largely happening in camera. I'd really like to see the board more transparent and public. I'd like to see as much discussion as possible occur in a public forum and probably have it recorded in a little more detail. It's not so much that somebody's trying to hide something, it's just that you really want to publicize what you're doing. Like, it's a public board. It's a public trust. You have to be seen to do your business, not just do it.
Thanks, Dawn.
So, yeah, really good ideas, and I absolutely agree with everything that the candidates have said. I'd just like to point out that it's, Sandra, where are you? One of the key problems on this board and with every other board and committee I've sat on is how to get the information out, how to connect, how to bring people in. So, I'm just going to give you an idea of some of the things we've done, and totally welcome any input in respect to how we could do it better, right? We do center voice through RDPC, and it's a rock star job that Rob Fisher's doing. We have meetings, like Janet mentioned, meetings in every school, and not a very good turnout, right? I don't know how center voice is going, but we'll have to measure that. Our meetings are televised. We have a Twitter account. We have a newsletter. We have newspaper ads. We have a website. Many of us attend school events, all the school events that we can, and we have our pictures and contact information on the website. So, given that, any ideas that the public can bring forward, I'm certainly open to listening to.
Okay. Thanks, Leslie. And, you know, we don't have to have all the candidates chime in on every question, so I'll turn it over to the floor again, if you can. Oh, well, we'll get Clint. Go ahead, Clint, and then we'll turn it over to the floor.
Yeah. I'll just say something because I don't want you to judge me on that last question. But, you know, like, I try and be very visible to the public. I try and go to all sorts of events just to mingle with people, just to get to know my community. I'm on Facebook all the time because, you know, sometimes I want my opinions to be heard, and sometimes I need to challenge, you know, whether it's bigotry or racism or whatever. And so, I just, you know, I know that if I'm on the board, that I'm going to do so even more so, you know, going to even more events and more public gatherings and school events and, you know, just doing my part to be as participatory as I can and getting to know you, you know, so.
Okay. Thanks, Clint. So, again, we welcome your questions. We've got one microphone, and mosey on up. And please identify yourself. Go ahead. Hi.
Hi. My name is Robin Foley, and I'm a teacher at Arti Parker here. I have three main reasons why I'm here. One, I'm a mother. I have a son going through this district. Two, I'm a longtime community member, born and raised, and unless there's some lottery god out there, I don't think I'm leaving anytime soon. And three, to be blunt, I am an employee, an employee you're going to directly impact. So, I'm very proud to be an employee here. We do fantastic things. We've also had some rough years in the media in the past three or four years. So, my question is, and this is going to be a hard question, and I'm going to ask you to look at your value base and your gut instinct opposed to being a politician. We need to know kind of where your value base is coming from. Are you, if you had to make a choice, your priorities are going to lie on outward PR, looking at our statistics, celebrating our achievements? Or are your priorities are going to be inner, where you help us, support us, address our problems, and maybe not get the accolades for it? Thank you.
Sorry, Robin. I'm still confused about your question. I'm sorry. Could you just offer a bit of clarity, because you're talking about these two things that are like diametrically opposed? Could you phrase that as a question?
Okay. If you were put to the choice, would you rather focus on the public eye or work on our inner structure? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. All right. And anyone care to tackle that? Vince, you've got the microphone. Go ahead.
Yeah. Robin, you actually just gave me a good plug here to finish the rest of my speech there that I got cut off from earlier, so. So, I guess this can, I might actually answer your question. So, the one part you guys didn't get to hear was, I truly enjoy working with your administration team, and I honestly believe that we have the best educators in the province. the province, and staff as well, right here in our district. Their passion, creativeness, and sheer energy that I was privileged to witness this past term is extremely inspiring. It did not go unnoticed. I've, as I've personally seen firsthand, the progress and outcomes that are made every time I've been invited to speak at any school function or event that I attended. So, I'm thinking that answers your question a little bit. I'm actually here for the teachers, like, when I say teachers, educators, staff, danders, librarians, clerks, by the way, everybody. I'm here for everybody. Like, I mean that. They're the backbone of our schools system, and this four years has been a blast, like, with the people I've met. And hopefully, I don't know, that answered your question directly.
Thanks, Vince. Anybody else? What are your priorities? I'll throw it down to Doug first. Go ahead, Doug. Yep.
Yeah, to answer your question, I think definitely the internal focus would be, what I would be interested in. And I think, as I said in my speech, the trained professionals that work within the school, I would hope that you would bring those issues to the board, and we could work together to resolve whatever it is you'd like to be, you would like addressed. And I think if we do a good job of that, then the external accolades will come, and it'll be a secondary thing. We won't have to have anything to do with. It'll just happen.
Okay. And next, we had Sandra, I think. Then Ryan, Sandra, Ryan, and...
Thank you for your question.
And then Carolyn down the end.
So, like we hear so many times, the best work is done behind the scenes, and, you know, the administrative staff is what makes everything happen. If we didn't have the teachers in the district, we wouldn't have anybody to teach our students. You are who is most important. We need you to educate our students, and I think that focusing on inner issues is the most important. Thank you.
Thanks. And next, Ryan?
You know, I was thinking about, you know, because we were talking about communicating to the outside, which is often, you know, in one direction, that direction is outwards. I absolutely would be focused from the inside out, because I really do think that's where you build a strong, healthy culture. And people need feedback, just like students do. So, they need feedback that's timely and specific and positive, ultimately to hear that they're doing a good job from the people who are supervising them. So, not necessarily from the board directly to a teacher, but through superintendents and through principals. But the stories that teachers and students tell when they go home are the most important and powerful and true stories that we have to tell. So, what we might do in a newsletter, or online, or in a media release is nothing compared to the stories that the people tell when they go outside the building. And that's how you build, I think, a strong, healthy community and a strong, healthy culture. So, thanks for the question, Robin.
Thank you. And Carolyn, down at the end, you're next. What are your priorities for communicating and other things?
I think that's a really great question, and I really thank you for bringing that up. I think for myself, I would want to see a board that focuses on the internal, how things are working internally, the same way that as you, we take care of our bodies. If we're not taking care of the inside, the outside isn't going to look so great. So, we need to start there. And I think if we are actively engaged with the teachers and the students and the parents, and we're taking what they need into consideration, and there's an open and honest communication both ways, and we're putting the parents, the students, and the teachers as the priority, then we can't go wrong, and it will look great on the outside.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. And, okay, we'll open it up to the floor again. Okay, Leslie did. Okay, go ahead, Leslie.
Mark.
And Janet next after that, so.
Is this on?
Just wave at me, and I get my attention. Otherwise, you may not get a voice.
Okay. As my speech, and what I intended to allude to was always on respectful relationships, and always on the internal model. And it is not PR-focused at all. It's not external-focused at all. If we take care of the foundational stuff, which is, of course, teachers and relationships, then it comes together, because we are, that's who the district is. Thanks.
Okay, and back to Janet here. It's like a baton. Go ahead.
We have a job to do, and that is what I've talked about in my speech already. And like Doug said, he had a whole bunch of teachers that he'd like to thank, and I'd have a whole bunch, too, that I would also like to thank. Of course, that is our role, and that's what we need to be focusing on, is the internal structures and getting the job done day after day. And accolades are the least of our concerns. However, there is one person in the audience, because I can sort of see in the front row, and there's Wally Itzen there at the beginning. And he was recognized provincially for all the work he had done in the band program for many years. So, but that's probably not why he went to work every day. But he did manage to get some accolades, and we want to acknowledge that for him. But it's, Sandra has said, it's the day-to-day, every single day, showing up for work, doing your job with those kids. And like Ryan says, maybe they're going to say something to their parents when they get home. But it's, the PR problem is if you're not doing your job, then you have a PR problem, because you will be on the front page of the paper, and you're going to try to get off the front page of the paper. But one way to do that is to do the job every single day, which many of the teachers in this room do, without accolades.
Thank you, Janet. Okay, and again, we'll turn to your question. So, come on up, and we've got one microphone on that side of the room. So, go ahead and just identify yourself, and go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Lovren Pollock. I just have a question on clarity with respect to the three-minute opening that was made with respect to Guido's comment on being involved in negotiations. I'd like to understand, maybe I misheard you, I'm not sure, but I thought I heard you say you were involved with Valley's negotiations over the last three years. So, if you could just clarify where you were involved in negotiations for me, please, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. So, get the microphone down to Guido there. That'd be great, just so everyone can hear it. Go ahead.
Sorry if I didn't make myself clear. We have the two steelworker locals within our district for our EEA secretarial staff that are maintenance personnel. I was involved in working out a contract and coming to an agreement on, for them, so within our district. And ours, the last one was a five-year agreement as well. So, that's within the district is the work that I've done, bargaining.
Okay. And thank you, Lovren. And we'll take another question? Hi, go ahead.
Good evening, candidates. My name is Sarah Schloss. I am one of the high school teachers. I am also listening to this with great interest, because I am one of the voc ed teachers here that needs to be accredited. And I am wondering, because I see most of you up here, a very large percentage of you are trade workers or involved with trade workers. I want to know how you are going to support me and my voc ed program reach that accreditation. What kind of support are you going to offer me as a teacher to reach that accreditation, so that I can bring out the best in my students?
Okay, so, we're talking vocational education, and since Vince got the microphone, we'll turn it over to him firstly. So, go ahead. We're talking about accreditation for, for the, well, teachers.
No, accreditation for the students. We have to, we have to get our programs credited.
Perfect, thank you.
So that our students can.
So, the red seal is what you're talking about, I thought, was, because we brought this up in the past at our meetings. This is a, I don't want to say sticking point, but it's a pretty passionate point for a lot of the trustees that are current board right now. The big thing I keep hearing back is the paperwork, the, there's a red seal approval, the system that goes with the vocational programs. We are, so, you know, we are revisiting quite often, especially as Leslie alluded to there, with our programs that we got outside of community, like we've had partnerships, what was the acronym again, the High School Apprenticeship Program? So, it's, it is a big deal. I guess all I guess is, yes, we're not ignoring you. We are working on it.
Okay, we've got maybe Leslie, and then Ryan, and then Guido as well.
Hi. Specific to this, we had, just a couple of weeks ago, we had an educational and programming committee meeting. And part of the High School Apprenticeship Program, Stephen LaRocque, his, part of his duties this year is to actually assist with all the paperwork and all that goes along with that. And it's well beyond my level of expertise. And I work with Training and Employment Services, and Stephen LaRocque works down the hall in apprenticeship Manitoba. But it's extremely tricky and has many, many layers to it, right? And that's part of the problem. And Stephen is actually, part of his, a certain percentage of his time is going to be allocated to working through exactly that problem.
Okay, thanks. And we'll turn it back over to Guido, and then Ryan.
Okay, so, we, our accreditation had lapsed in a couple of our programs, and we just got it back for the power mechanics. And with that comes the heavy-duty, agricultural, there's another one that escapes from me right now. So, what are we going to do to help you? There are people in place, there's resources in place that'll help you get this accreditation. It's a lot of work. It truly is a lot of work, and not only for the teacher, but I imagine there, we would put whatever resources in place we have to, to ensure that that happens. It's just, it's beneficial to our students as well. If they can get hours towards their apprenticeship, and it helps them later on after they leave high school, as I talked to you earlier, you know what, it's better for everybody involved, right? Whatever it takes, we will, we will ensure that this can happen.
Okay, thanks, Guido. And we'll turn it over to Ryan.
Thanks for the question, Sarah. So, and again, probably people that are on the board know about this issue, and maybe people that aren't, don't know, but essentially there's a process. I'm sure it's about a three-inch ring binder thick worth of going through that process. It's a massive undertaking. And when you're going through an accreditation process, that's in addition to your regular duties as a teacher, which is probably at the heart of the question that you're asking. Is that, yes, no?
No, actually, I'm looking more at the finance that goes with it, because it's more like a five-inch binder that goes with it. I'm willing to do that work. But on top of that, I also need to meet my other duties as a teacher with my students. And that's what I'm wondering. Is the funding going to be there? Is the hours going to be there if I need more than what my contract allot? Am I looking at a possibility of a part-time person coming in to assist with that temporarily? Those are the kind of things that I want the candidates to be looking at, because the trades across Canada is where it's at. Teachers, doctors, unless you're in the north, there's a lot of people that are in the professions that are not having jobs, but the trades are in demand everywhere. And we need to build that. We need to build that in the north to keep our kids here in the north. We need to keep them in the job sector here. So, we need that support.
Northern People for Northern Jobs trained in the north. That sounds kind of familiar.
Got that.
But the key here is, I think, you know, we often look at budgets as being a fixed commodity, but what every single person has in the tank, you know, that HR tank, that engagement and energy is also a bit fixed. It'll flow at different times in our career, but I think when we have a plate that's full and we add to that plate, either something has to come off of it, we have to prioritize, or we need to resource it accordingly. That doesn't always mean hiring more people, because if the budget is fixed and you can hire the number of people you have, that's what you do. It may need, mean that we need to be more creative inside the box. But if we prioritize it as a board, I think it's also our role to make sure that the resources are there. And that's not me saying they aren't there. Like, I agree what we've, what's happened with Stephen LaRocque and the apprenticeship piece. I think that's moving in an absolutely fantastic direction, that we have programs getting accredited again is very good. That tells me that the board has made it a priority. And once the question is posed to us as a board, it's something, you know, we'd all have to look at.
Thanks, Ryan. I think Doug wanted to chime in as well.
I don't have anything really more to add, except to say that I definitely support vocational education and the trades. And I have colleagues that sit on the apprenticeship board for welding, and we've done a little bit of work recently to set up a welding test center in Brandon through some other work things that I do. So, I mean, I don't know the specific details of funding and budgets, and, but I'm sure that definitely you would have my support, and if there's a way, we'll find it.
Okay, thanks, Doug. And thanks for your question.
And thank you, candidates, and good luck.
All right, and we'll entertain more questions. Oh. That's right. Lay off the strong stuff, right? Okay, we'll take more questions. So, go ahead. Go ahead, and your name?
My name is Christina Hearn. I am a part-time teacher here at the building, and I also am a divisional consultant. My question is more for new candidates to the board, so those who are not trustees currently. We do have two school divisions within our community, and our division, being the larger one, does offer some that are rather appealing to the students who are not in our division. What is your position on the access to those for students who are not in our division?
So, you're talking about the call for Frankophonee?
Yes, and them, and also students who may go to like an online private school, or who are homeschooled, et cetera. Because we do have things like our industrial arts program, band program, French immersion initiatives.
Great. Okay, well, thanks, Christina. We'll cut right to the chase, then. We'll go right down to the end with Carolyn. So, again, the question is access to programs for those who may not be part of the school board.
Okay. Well, in terms of children not in our district having access to our public-funded programs, I think my opinion has been pretty public, that I think there should be access. That being said, there is quite a process to go through in terms of funding and making sure that the allowances are there, that there's the proper resources, but also to make sure that, what's the word, the insurance policies and all those things, so that kids that come in from the other districts aren't at risk, and we're not putting too much pressure on the teachers in this district. With that said, I have personally been in contact with 38 other districts within this province, and have researched with them and how they do it. So, it is possible. I obviously would be all for it. But I also want to stress that what we need to take care of first, and I was really going to try not to be positional on many issues, but this one, I think, is pretty important, because I think it affects everybody in every district, whether you homeschool, private school, French school, Mystery Lake. I think what needs to be the first priority are the students in Mystery Lake School Division. And I say that sincerely despite recent situations. I think that if there is a spot available, let's say in the band, and there, it's the elephant in the room, folks. It's, let's say that there is a spot available, that there is time to dedicate to that student, that the staff, the administrators, the teachers, everybody is on board with it. It comes before the administrators. It comes before the board. If there's only one spot, that spot should be given, in my opinion, to a student that is fully enrolled at the Mystery Lake School Division. If there are then leftover spots in the band or in whichever that they want access to, then I think it should be, you know, first come, first basis, first come, first served basis. Maybe there should be an interview process. Maybe there should be proof of the education they've had ahead of time that prepares them for that course that they want access to. I think there's far more to the situation than just, do we want them to have access or not? Does that answer your question?
Okay, well, thank you. And we'll turn it over to, well, other candidates who aren't incumbent. Ryan put up his hand next, so go ahead. We're talking about access to school board facilities and programs.
A variety of things, right? Because I heard Frankophonee, and I heard a number of possibilities there. I'm a pretty big believer in families' right to make choices that they think are in the best interest of their kid. I believe in that pretty deeply, and I believe that in... I believe in that pretty deeply, and I believe that in a community this size, we can sustain a whole bunch of different possibilities, and in fact, I wouldn't see something like homeschooling or francophone school division as a threat to our school system, but I would see it as a compliment. We're all partners in education, trying to achieve the same kinds of goals. And, you know, for us as a company, we've spent a lot of time on the issues of retention and attraction, and if it helps people choose Thompson and stay in Thompson, we've, you know, I've worked closely with francophone families, I've worked closely with families, families who have decided to send their students somewhere else because we didn't have those opportunities here in Thompson, and then eventually weren't far behind, you know, that moved away as well. So, whatever we can do to make our community stronger, I think that's great. Thankfully, we're not a rural community of 300 with 23 kids in the school, and we can hardly afford a couple of teachers, so I'm all for diversity and choice and possibility.
Hey, thanks Ryan, Liz?
I think for me, when I consider that, I think it's about capacity, so we have to realistically look to see if there's capacity to incorporate. I'm all about inclusion if it's possible, we also have, we're fiscally responsible, so I think we're responsible to our taxpayers first, and I mean, if you're living within our community and paying school taxes, and you should have a right to the services if they're available, if students are registered in the school, they should have first priority, but I do believe that if we have capacity and there's opportunity to be inclusive, we should also look at that.
Okay, thanks Liz, and anyone else, Dawn, or, we'll turn it, okay, that's being awfully gentlemanly. Sandra, go ahead, yeah.
Thank you for your question. I think it's important to remember that if students aren't enrolled in school, the school district of Mystery Lake doesn't get funding allotment for that, for those students. But I do think that as a community, we should work together, that's the most important thing, is working together, and I think if there are ways that we can make it happen, then by all means, we should work together and make it happen, but there are policies and there are budgets that we do need, the public needs to remember, that as a school board, we need to follow, and I think, you know, as board members, we wanna work with the community, and if that's something that the community is interested in, and then by all means, I think that we would maybe revisit and look at ways that we can make that happen if it is possible, and maybe it isn't, but we're here to work with the community.
Okay, thanks Sandra, and Dawn?
So I have to admit, one of the things I don't fully understand on this is what the trade-offs are, what the costs are, what the opportunity costs are, before really making a decision on something like that. I think it's essential that we actually receive the information that the school, the school staff can provide to us, the superintendents. I know my personal feeling is that there are some things that are very difficult to achieve if you're not part of a large school, that we have opportunities here that it would be nice to make available to others. I've tutored, well, I've helped my own kids with grade 12 math, I've tutored other kids, and I'll tell you one thing, I would never dare try and teach it. And, if you're being homeschooled, then at some point, that's something you need, I have a hard time with thinking that we can't find a way to deliver it. Having said that, pretty comfortable with the idea, I don't have any clue what cost that comes at to the district, and that's real, that matters.
Okay, thanks Dawn. All right, and then back to Doug.
Yeah, and I think there is a policy in place, but if it comes up again, I would look at the facts, and as everybody has said, I think there's a budget to consider, and if the facilities are available, and if the teacher, that, you know, it's gonna be some class or function, that I think the teacher deserves some input as to whether or not they're willing to have somebody show up just for one class, but I think if there's a way, I believe in inclusivity, and it's our job to work together to try to find a way to educate kids, so, that's my position on it.
Okay, thanks, thanks Doug. And quickly to Janet, I know it was directed to...
Okay, if an incumbent answers the question. Okay, I decided to do a little bit of homework this morning, so I made a couple of frantic phone calls to the superintendent's office to get the enrollment numbers, which are as of September 30th, which was Tuesday, and I have my enrollment numbers, but I also got the numbers for the grant per pupil Manitoba education for 2014-2015. So for each and every student in our division who's sitting in a seat on September 30th, which is just a couple of days ago, we as a division will receive $9,784 for students sitting in chairs, in classrooms, in our division. We do not get the money for people who are not enrolled in our division. So of course, we're a little bit cranky about saying, oh, well, we're gonna help you, you and you, we don't get money for that. People do pay their property taxes, everybody at this table in this room is paying property taxes, but as a division, we get the money for those sitting in the chairs. So 9784 per pupil for our students, okay? So, if there's capacity, I agree with Liz, if we have a little extra capacity, we'll certainly, you know, listen to you or whatever, but please remember, if you're not enrolled in our division, we don't get money for you, plain and simple.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll open up the floor.